Washing our backyards, but we also because we have no curbs now on Waller. This it's coming in our front yards, especially down Sherre down there by the lake.
That's why we need to.
And so and so as.
Yeah.
As as coming into city government, we take the the worst conditions first.
Is it worse because they were the first to come to you?
No.
Cause I've got I've got video from ten years ago.
But here's here's where we're at. We we can't do everybody at one time, just like Mr. Cor.
I'm not saying.
Mr. Cor said, we're not saying that we're we're not recognizing your issue and that we're not gonna take a look at it because we are. But one thing at a time, you know, and right now.
I'd swear for life.
Because I wanna try to fight for grant grant money and fund money for for the other subdivisions as well, okay? Yeah, there's a whole lot of history in this city with the with the drainage issues. Okay. Uh, do we need to decide if we're gonna go ahead with Brass Eagle?
Are we gonna vote on it? I think we should vote, Jim?
What we vote?
We're running on him to get a contract with the city to do this.
His last bid was for two hundred and twenty-two.
Okay, I'll I'll repeat I'll repeat what happened. He he put that bid in two hundred and twenty-two because he added concrete to all the driveways. And that wasn't.
And that was then.
That wasn't part of the scope of work. He misunderstood. You remember the meeting we had? He was there? Okay, he 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 just put in for to put to replace all their driveway instead of of its kind. We need to replace just just what needs to be replaced, not not, you know, concrete.
We need to not accept that bid because that bid is for.
We're not accepting it. He came, he's, we had the original bid. We had the one fifty-nine, fifty-three plus the performance.
Need to re-advertise since we're gonna turn down the only bid we got.
No, I I don't think we need to re-advertise. I think we have mulled this over to the point where something needs to be, action needs to be taken for oak wood.
Well, the only bid we got was two twenty-two.
No, the bid, the first bid we got was one fifty-nine, oh, fifty-three.
I know what he's saying, Paul, but the difference that we sit down and talked about was.
I remember that.
He said, this is the difference, you know, do you want it concreted? He hasn't changed his bid. He changed the, he changed the bid because he thought it would, uh, we wanted concrete. It's not changed.
Then we vote to not accept his first bid.
That was because there was three different scopes of work that was an amendment to that?
I'm not arguing that. I'm saying we voted to not accept it.
Yes.
And then we voted to not, now, so wait, the only thing before us is one twenty-two or two twenty-two right now.
It's one fifty-nine, fifty-three plus a performance bond.
Okay, I thought I read in the minutes it was two twenty-two. I thought that's what he said.
That was with the concrete.
Right.
He was gonna do the concrete.
That's the only bid in front of us at the moment, that I see. Right? We don't, we don't have another bid other than the two twenty-two. Right? Or wrong?
He came in and changed his bid.
When?
The last meeting. He came in, he was.
Yeah, he was here.
I was here at the last meeting we had, six hundred and twenty-seven. Pardon?
Twenty seconds.
That was a special meeting that you got stuck in traffic.
Oh, what? Okay, so there was a meeting?
No, we just had a general talk.
Is there any page of work where he's got the price of, which will be one sixty-three, fifty-five, five, three?
There's the one fifty-nine, fifty-three, okay, for the for the bid.
And was that for some sort of again?
What's the date on that, please?
Nine nine, nine nine twenty.
Twenty-nine, twenty-twenty.
Week after the, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought that was, I thought the meeting had happened. I'm sorry, I thought that was, I thought the meeting had been done. I thought that's what I, I thought that's what. If the pay there would be a form?
No, I said, I wouldn't worry too much about it, it doesn't sound like there's going to be a form anyway.
What was that?
No.
No, there was none, only Todd and I were here.
Something they want to meet?
Well, he, no, it wasn't a meeting. We, but he and I, part of the, uh, the conversation was when we got the first bid in, that, uh, he had, he had put one in with, uh, without the, the concrete and with the concrete, it was two twenty-two.
Not, not only the thing is, we turned that one down, we voted no. And then he put in another for two twenty-two, so that's what's for the meeting as far as I'm concerned.
No, then he just put in another one for a hundred and fifty-nine, one five three.
It's not another bid, he, he.
The original.
It's the, it's, it's the same price, he wasn't gonna, he wasn't gonna do it any different. Either we prolong this and we have to put it in the paper again, and I, I don't think he's doing anything illegal. I don't, he's the only one that put it in, you know, twice, two times, that put in that bid. Uh, Alex, what's your recommendation?
He reject, you rejected the two twenty-two, you then met with, I mean, I wasn't there, but you met with him. He then resubmitted his, his original proposal for one fifty-nine, the resolution is, if you has decided to maintain this, the resolution is to accept the bid for a hundred and fifty-nine, he's the only bidder.
We do reject that two twenty-two.
But you reject, so you got no bid in front of you.
We do. I mean, the, the bid, he came back and.
Do you have a feeling? Wouldn't? How do you reject this?
Let, let, let's let counsel, counsel finish this. At the, at the meeting we opened up, the two twenty-two.
That never been a meeting though, you can't call.
That meeting there was, when we opened the sealed bids, he was the only, he was the only bidder, okay? So, he was the only bidder. I advised, you know, he, he's got some different scope of work here, he's misunderstood, and so, I was gonna go back and speak with, with him, and, and, and say, why, you know, you put that, excuse me Lance, uh, put this back in there, um, that you put concrete down in all these, and he said, uh, yeah, I did that to say if you wanted to do it that way, that's the way we would do it, that's how much extra concrete.
Yeah, I remember that meeting, that's the one we had with the engineer and the, and the whole deal, yep, I remember all that.
No, it wasn't even that meeting, it was the last council meeting that we opened the sealed bids.
Okay, the ones before, was, was.
Yeah, we had a.
I just, I think where Jim's going is, we opened the bid, it was two twenty-two. Now, this is bid. How can you say, oh, I'm gonna give you this one fifty-nine, after the bids have already closed, how can you change the bid? I would, I would like to sign this deal off right now.
Me too.
Oh, I'm so bad.
I'm just concerned with, can this bite us in any way, shape, or form?
If he'd went up in price and said, hey, I wanna do that.
Well, yeah, oh, I very fully went down.
I could see that.
I very fully went down.
If there were ten bids, if there were ten bids, I could see that.
When we read the minutes of what actually, I can't recall if it was just rejected outright, or was rejected with, go back to him and negotiate, because I know at some point that was the concern, that was the, that was the conversation, just don't know if it was this one or the first one. So, the minutes reflect, if you guys turned it down, or said to the mayor, the director of the mayor, renegotiate, I don't remember. And that would've been, when we opened the bids.
Okay, we can, we can table this, guys, till Thursday night, if you all would like to, and, and leave.
Record it.
Leave it recorded, okay. All right, as we move on to, uh, Todd, you had some, or, excuse me, the sec, the first reading of ordinance two eighty-seven, twenty-twenty, Director of Public Works.
Is that me?
Counsel had a, a public works ordinance, two eighty-seven.
Before we, before we go to the, to the reading part, I asked Alex, two months ago, about getting a, uh, wanna say pen, I don't know if that's the right word? All we wanted to do was get, uh, monthly reports of what's being done, what's in process, what's coming up. And then somehow we turned it into this new, uh, Director of Public Works, I'm not sure how we got point eight of my page.
Counsel, counsel proposed this, I didn't propose it. It's up to you guys to decide, I mean, was there some discussion between counsel that they, I'm, I'm sure there was, I've heard it before, that, uh, that you guys wanted to change that scope of work, or what have you, so.
Well, like Todd said, you've been trying to get a monthly report, and I know Critten is getting bigger, and JD does do a lot in the city, and, and you've even said that he does, cuts grass and picks up trash, but he does other things too, but grass season's almost over. We're probably gonna need one day in the future to hire possibly another public works person, but we need to be able to justify, because we can't justify what goes on.
That's, that's not our job to justify what goes on, that's day-to-day operations and that's our job.
But in the, but personnel policy, whatever council asks for a report, they're allowed to get, along with the book that we got, KLC.
Well, that's great, that's, that's great, but.
There's also nuisance property ordinances that, that council don't follow, so, you know, you can say that I'm, I'm not possibly doing my job and I'm violating ordinances. If you, you write me a letter and say, I'd like the scope of work that, uh, the maintenance man has been doing for the, for the past couple of months, I'll, I'll write it out.
For mayor, I did that open record request back in June tenth, asking for a monthly report along.
June tenth, after the report left, or before?
No, I'm sorry, it was dated June the fourth.
Okay.
I picked it up June the tenth, I only got copies of Donna's timesheet, I got application employment, because see, we still haven't been able to find out if some of our employees are, uh, salary, or hourly, hourly?
Hourly.
My choose is getting it, it's gone. And, uh, but also in there was word reports from the personnel in chapter thirteen, and I still, we still haven't, we still haven't gotten a monthly report. And also it talks about how in the personnel policy, the treasurer is, which he might not have known yet, because he's new, the treasurer is supposed to keep track of time. So what we're saying, if we get a monthly report, we are gonna need to probably, in the future, hire more public works because Critten is getting bigger. But we need to be able to justify to residents when they come up, what did you do, and when it's time for the budget, here we go, so many, he's working this many hours, and again, we're still, I don't know if anybody knows if he's hourly or salary.
He's sal, he's salary.
Thank you.
You mentioned that, did you, what, what else?
He's salary, so he can't get overtime.
He doesn't?
Now, but in a salary position, we still don't know how many hours he's allowed to work up to. So, when you salary.
Forty hours, Danny.
Forty hours, okay, other places you're allowed to work more than forty hours, it's in there, but it's not in the personnel policy. About forty, forty hours.
I disagree with you, yeah, it is, I'm pretty sure it's in the, uh.
But in the personnel policy.
The procurement policy.
I'll have to find that, because it's not in, but, but we already have in the personnel policy, we have a maintenance worker, and we have a maintenance laborer, and on JD's card, business card, it has supervisor. But he's the only public works person, again, in the future, we are going to need more people, but if we could get a monthly report, which is, we've been asking for a long time, if we could get the monthly report of what we're going, we're like, yeah, oh my gosh, we do need an extra person, oh my gosh, we do need more people.
Well, let's get through the ordinance.
I thought you was doing it for that reason, absolutely, but I don't feel like that you're doing it for that reason, I believe that you're badgering, uh, employees, is what I feel like, so.
Well, there's a mediation section in here too, in case there's ever any problems with any harassment or anything like that, it's really great.
What was on the table?
Uh, the ordinance, Todd.
The ordinance on what?
No, honey, the ordinance.
Does council want to, uh, read a first reading for the ordinance, two eighty-seven, twenty-twenty? They had Alex get together?
I, I asked to have monthly reports, and then this come down the pipe. This is not what I asked for.
It's not from me?
Oh, I know it's not from you, it's come from.
Well, that's what I asked for, I got, must've got it confused.
Not from Alex.
Sorry.
That's what I, that's what I drafted, guys, I'm, I'm not taking any.
No, we're, we appreciate it, because in this ordinance, you wrote that we would get monthly reports, which was great.
I, I put together an ordinance that was requested by council members.
I requ, I requested this, I apologize, Alex, I must've got it wrong, Todd.
What, what's wrong about it?
I don't know, I.
Well, would there be, one thing, would there be a pay, would there be a pay increase for a public works director when he has no other employees?
No. It's just by ordinance, what I found is, when I actually re, researched the ordinance, it was passed in eighty-one, there are certain positions that the City of Critten has set forth, one of them is on ordinance twenty-one point one zero two, the public works director. It's actually defined, public works directors were just giving him a title, and then the duties and responsibilities were a culmination of, I think, if I recall, you and, and Todd's suggestions.
Oh, Todd.
There's no private, private office change.
Well, if some, if, if, if we could look in our, in Critten's personnel policy that, that we have, it's, it's towards the end on the job descriptions, and we have a City of Critten maintenance laborer, which breaks down what he does, and along with a, a maintenance worker. So they're, they're already in there, but if we could get the monthly report about what, what he does, again, we're gonna need, there's all kinds of things. But I mean, if we could read what's in here that has already existed in Critten, that's already been voted on, which has already been passed by council in the past, we already have that agreement. But if we could get, uh, if we get the report where we know what, what's going on, and we know we need more people.
You feel like he's doing, uh, too much, we can go ahead and hire somebody to help him out, that's what it sounds like.
Mayor, this is what I'm trying to get at, I'm not trying to fight with you, I'm trying to be very respectful. You know what he does. We don't.
That's why that ordinance was drafted.
But, but we don't need that ordinance.
All right, you all decide what you wanna do on that, okay, and I'll get it to you, I'll get it to you.
We, anytime, anytime. Here's your, here you go, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be nice, we want a monthly report, which the personnel policy has, if the council member does the mayor for a report.
It says a yearly report, right?
It's a yearly report and any other report that we deem necessary.
Okay, if, if you want, go ahead.
And that's kind of why, that's why that, that's, I mean, that's why I believed I drafted that ordinance, was because you guys asked for complication of what you deem necessary, which I believe, if I recall by memory, it's a monthly report, and that becomes part of legislative grade, your legislative ordinance.
We also requested that become a part of the procurement policy in that ordinance, is that incorrect, Todd? Or did you request that in a meeting, because I remember that coming up?
I think it was in a meeting a while back. Well, Todd's looking, let me share my impression of the ordinance. It, it's, it's written in a very high lofty way. If we were a really big city with multiple employees in public works, I think this would be an appropriate, uh, appropriate ordinance to have in place, you know, it talks about managing personnel, doing monthly reports, doing annual reports, doing a five-year plan, doing an annual capital plan. In my experience, a job description and.
Okay.
And a position description should actually say what you do, and then you do what you say, and you measure against that. Then, the worst thing you could do is write a procedure and ordinance and all that, it's so lofty that you can't live up to it, and I think we're at the point, we can't live up to this yet. That's my impression. There's a lot of good stuff in here, for when we're bigger, but it had a lot of personnel management, an awful lot of meetings, and awful lot of reports, and all that kind of stuff, for managing effort, and that could be contractors, that could be personnel, it could be a lot of people. It's written at a really high level, I think we need to get closer to the ground. Say what you do, do what you say, measure against that.
And, and I appreciate you asking, JD, last time we spoke about this, you know, that gives him, uh, an opportunity to, you know, I, I don't think, really, speaking for you JD, it matters either way, he's just gonna go out and do his job and, and go, go with it, um.
So, Mayor, you say you have page thirty-six?
I have all that.
Of the personnel policy, chapter three.
I have all the personnel policy.
Section four.
I also have all the ordinances that states that you guys aren't following ordinances, so if you wanna say that I'm not following ordinances, let's, let's rebuttal on that.
Okay, the personnel administrator, which is the mayor, shall submit a written report on personal activities to the city council annually, you said that, that is correct. And, at such other times as requested.
If I have time.
If it's been requested for over a year. That's all I wanna say, and if we're gonna hire more people, we need to be able to justify to the taxpayers, like, yes, he's, this is all this stuff that he's doing.
I have a question, I have a question. Mr. Purcell, when Mr. Livinggood was mayor, was he questioned about, um, JD's, uh?
You're gonna have to direct your questions about Mr. Livinggood, Mr. Livinggood not being.
Well, was council ever, um, ask about employees?
There were questions, but council didn't function like this when Mayor Livinggood was the mayor, so need to direct your questions to him.
Okay, sir. I would, if he would've left.
As we move on, um, you guys decide what you need to do on that ordinance, I'm baffled. Todd, you, Todd, you had some questions about the recycle center, I have many answers for you on that, but.
Well, um, I believe that bid we got, what was it, thumbs up or something like that, construction for seventy-seven thousand, for concrete, for the recycle bin? I drove down to Williamstown, to the cordials, out behind the cordial, and that's how theirs is set up, sitting on gravel, no fence, due to, there is no county ordinance saying a recycle bin has to have fencing. A trash dumpster does.
The, the city does have an ordinance saying that it has to be on so much concrete and then it has to be fenced.
That's asphalt, that's asphalt, and I do have to say that I've heard from the circuit clerk's office that they're having problems with Republic Service even wanting to come empty that, just, just to relay that message, but, yeah, that does, that's asphalt there, that's not gravel.
That's gravel.
That's gravel?
No.
Asphalt is what the little white lines are on.
I think I'm telling you enough to figure that out.
But it's also, it's been in this parking lot before, and it's all concrete.
I don't think so. Here's, here's, here's where we're at. The, the city building has parking lot, it has to have so many parking spaces, you can't take up the parking lot for a recycle bin, also, the concrete has to be a, a measurable amount of concrete to hold that, and to hold, uh, that bin.
Twenty-four inches deep.
Twenty-four, twelve? Engineer stated twelve inches deep. Parking lot seven.
Twenty-four inches.
It's a bridge, it's very easy. And I don't think it's cracked out here where it was before. Todd, you lived across the street for how many years?
Twenty-one in January.
Do you remember being in the parking lot out there?
When was that removed and why was it removed originally?
I don't know, I have to ask Professor, Professor Livinggood.
I mean, there must be a reason why they rem, they removed that.
I don't remember why they moved it.
Let's find out.
People putting couches and everything else out there, sure.
Those are good out there too, made up tires and everything else.
Yeah, and that's why Republic Service, uh, come down.
On that note, the last time I discussed this, we heard a discussion about, you know, location of the recycle bin, that might be more cost effective, so the discussion about. You guys discussed last, the last meeting about having a review of different locations possible for the recycle bin, that would, wait. There's a lot of concrete to put this area in back here, maybe, that's, that's the cost, was there a different area that you guys thought, but?
It just was right out, it was just right out there, that, that's the only one that I knew, and then the one by the industrial park, where there was no cameras, and yeah, people did dump. Uh, Republic's under, Republic got in trouble for dumping recyclables that weren't contaminated, so they're on notice, so they have to recycle, they have to recycle their things, and yes, there are some recyclables that get put in there that they don't recycle, like the plastic, grocery bags, that has to go someplace else.
I'd just like to add, since we're talking about recycling, um, Grant County at this time is getting ready to do a tire removal. So, anybody, is it Friday?
I believe it's Friday.
Anybody that's got tires laying around or anything like that, that can have them removed, um, Grant County will pick them up. I shared that on my Facebook page, if anybody is, um.
Grant County will pick them up, or you?
You gotta take them to the State Barn, it's at GoTop.
It actually starts, starts Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
You'll see me there Friday, I'll be working bone term month time.
Oh, will they, they only take certain size tires?
Yes, you better check with, uh, they check with, because I've got tires that they will not take.
Really?
Really?
Yes.
Well, it says here, tires not accepted, foam filled, calcium filled, off-road construction, rubber tracks, solid tires.
All of them.
They won't take tractor tires, they won't take, uh, large truck tires.
They won't?
Oh, okay, yeah.
There's a number call if you say.
Yeah, why don't you give that numbers out, so that they can get that on YouTube, what you saw.
I just have to say, by means, I can hear it, it's top twelve. But the number's, uh, eight two four, three zero, five zero.
Right there downtown.
Eight two four.
Three zero, five zero.
Thank you.
As we move on, uh, to the number six on old business, probably should be on new business, but, uh, Todd, you had a question about day-to-day operations?
Do, are we skipping number five?
Oh, he already gave it.
He already told me.
Oh, it's, it's in your packet, that sign.
Okay.
Signs project thing.
I'm, I'm just trying to define, well, I mean, I know what day-to-day operations generally fall under. Um, my circumstance was with, with these signs, I called back a couple times, well, once, about once a week, just to see where the status was, just to find out. I was told it's a day-to-day operation now. Well, that didn't sit well with me, due to the fact of, I was involved and now I'm just cut out of it, and I can't ask a question without being told it's day-to-day. I think council needs a little more transparency of what's going on on the day-to-day. We're, well, I'm not gonna speak for everybody else. I'm not looking to interfere, I would just like to be kept up to date of where we are and how things are progressing. So anyway, you can clear that, uh, subject up.
I'd like to respond to that. First of all, I didn't get a phone call, I got an email from Sean to the Critten City, uh, email.
That's true.
And part of that conversation was the storm drain at, uh, Bigum Lane. Now, JD has been working with a gentleman out there on Bigum Lane, in order, in reference to, um, a pipe or a storm drain or something like that, that needs to be replaced, he's made contacts with people to try to, uh, get out there and look at it, and they haven't done that yet, but what my concern is, and I know it's an election year, guys, but you can't go to these people that have concerns and problems that they've already told to the city, and you go out there and make promises, promises to them. The guy stated that Todd, you came out there and made a promise to him or something, that it wasn't even part of the scope of work that was getting done, that's what I'm talking about, the day-to-day operation of the city. Let JD take care of that kind of, kind of stuff.
Are you gonna, I wanna be a figure. Are you gonna sit here and tell me that I went out there and made promises to him?
Yes.
You're full of crap.
No, that's what you told.
I know. I told him I would get back to him, like I did. The first meeting of the month, JD told me, after the meeting, in the parking lot, I'm going out there tomorrow. That would've been Wednesday. I called the man that night. Guy's coming out, he'll be there tomorrow. Guy said, great, I'll wait on him. Two days later, the man calls me back, nobody ever showed up, I say, I'll just, I'll check into it, that's what I was told, I didn't make any promises to him.
He was stating that you made a promise, that, no, this is JD, and, you know, he's employee, and the day that you sent that, he was sitting there, he said, he talked to the gentleman out there and made a promise of something that we cannot do, it's not part of that scope of work. And so he has made contacts, that's what I meant by the day-to-day operation of the city. Now, you know, I'm kind of in the middle, you know, because I'm here on your side, and I'm here on JD's side, and he's trying to make contacts to get that taken care of with Billy Pelph, uh, Billy Catlet, I'm sorry, and he has talked with him to go out there and try to get this fixed, uh, we, that's, that's my.
The only promise I made was I was gonna bring it back to, to you guys, come to find out, two or three weeks prior to me going out there, he'd already talked to somebody up here, either you, or JD, or someone, he didn't let that information out.
How did you get connected to them?
He called me. I don't go out just looking in the neighborhood, like, what can I do for you? I don't have that kind of time.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, that's what I meant by that, that conversation there, so, okay, anything else?
Is Billy Catlet from Dallas the candidate?
No, he works at Bullitt Pile.
Oh, that's the guy that did the bush hog?
Yeah.
Okay.
Guys, can we get out of here, it's time.
Hold on, hold on. I have a message for you guys from Brian Marshall. He asked to remind council that candidate profile forms are due tomorrow, along with a headshot photo. He also needs to know who will be attending the candidate forum next week, so get with Brian Marshall with Grant County News, and talk to him about that. And also, uh, the special meeting will be October fifteenth at seven PM, where we will be discussing the property tax ordinance, economic relief package, CARES Act, the budget amendment, and also Oakwood, Oakwood Project and Brass Eagle, anything else we need to add to that?
Probably wait until the budget is, until it's been, uh, seven PM.
Seven PM Thursday, October fifteenth, the budget amendment.
I thought we were gonna, to make sure that CARES Act has.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, we'll wait on that.
Ordinance, CARES Act, and, um, Brass Eagle.
Brass Eagle. Anybody like to, to speak from the, uh, from our guest? Everybody good?
Mayor, one thing I forgot.
Okay.
Uh, sorry, folks, the fire department's also selling breast cancer awareness T-shirts, it is October, and so, we've got them on sale. We're running out of sizes, so if anybody's interested, call the firehouse, contact us on Facebook, or stop by, and they're twenty dollars, and of course, it is supporting, uh, cancer research and breast cancer testing. So, sorry, I forgot that, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Appreciate you guys, also, the next city council meeting, the regular meeting's November tenth, twenty-twenty, at seven PM. I appreciate you all coming, and y'all blessed, and have safety.